I will call this meeting to order on March 31, 2020. Thank you, Stephen Chino and our team for helping us do our first ever video conferencing. Just so that the audience and the public knows that's watching, we do have two commissioners in the chambers today, myself and Commissioner Wilson. And then our other commissioners, Commissioner Abraham, McElroy, and Watkins are watching from home. We're practicing social distancing here. I think we're at least 10 feet away from one another. And our city clerk is on the other side as well. So we're trying to do, practice what we're preaching in our community. We have our media here. We have the Paducah Sun and also WPSD sitting in the audience, very far apart from one another and far apart from us. So thank you all for complying and keeping each other safe. I'm going to ask the city clerk if she will call roll for us, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner McElroy?
Present.
Commissioner Watkins? Commissioner Watkins?
Oh, I think he's muted or his audio is not on.
Oh, I think you're muted.
There you are.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Harless?
Here. All right. Thank you all for your patience. We're going to, I keep saying we're literally building planes as we're flying them these days because this is all new, a new experience for all of us. I'm going to ask Commissioner McElroy if you will lead us in the invocation, please.
Thank you. Let us pray. Oh, dear sovereign God, we thank you that you are with us at all times. And because you are with us at all times, we don't have to be anxious about anything, but we can bring our requests to you. And our requests are many today. We pray first that you would forgive us when we fall short and when we have not listened and followed your decrees. And we pray that today we would be people more like you as we seek to follow you and seek your guidance and wisdom. We pray first for the sick and afflicted. We pray that you would give them good health and that they would have good caregivers and that the best possible outcomes would be the result of their care. We pray, we pray, we plead with you to stop the spread of this virus. Father, we are so thankful for our healthcare workers. Our soldiers really do wear scrubs today. We thank you that they are willing and able to be on the front lines. And we pray across this country and the world that you would provide those healthcare workers where they are needed and that you will keep them safe and healthy. Here in our own community, we pray that you would help our hospitals and clinics to know how to use their workers best, how to use their supplies best, and provide all that we need, Father. We pray that you would be with the leadership of our country, our state, and our city, that we would all make good decisions that would help restore good health to our nation, good physical health, spiritual health, and economic health, Father. We pray that you would help us make those good decisions and help us to follow the leadership, Father. These are difficult, unprecedented times. There are a million ways to do things, but we pray that when decisions are made, we will follow willingly. We pray, Father, for those who are lonely and isolated, especially our elderly right now, that we will know how to care and love for them in unique ways that is safe and that you will meet their needs. We pray for our children that are out of school, that still need to learn, that are at home with parents that are also trying to work. We pray you would just multiply their energy and their means and take care of them. And, Father, help them not to be afraid. We also pray, Father, for all our churches that are trying to minister to their congregations in new, creative ways. We pray for our nonprofits so they'll be able to help meet needs in our community. Father, we trust you in this crisis. We pray that you would grow us, that you would revive us, that you would help us to know how to love and care for those who are in need, our neighbors all over this great city. Help us to be stronger together, Father, and help us to be stronger in you. It's in Jesus, the Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Commissioner. And if everyone wants to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, I think we can stand here for sure. Maybe you all can as well. Pivot your cameras. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands over one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. We could not do one of those choral singing, guys. We are not all in the same, in the same tune. And I can't sing, so you wouldn't want to see that happen anyway. City manager, are there any deletions on the agenda tonight?
No, Madam.
I don't think we can do that, but it's not on there. All right. All right, I'm going to move us into the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Does anyone on the commission have a desire to remove something from the consent agenda? Not tonight? Oh, okay, thank you. I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval, please.
Approve minutes for the March 10, 2020, meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah. Receive and file documents. Appointment of Mary Katz, April Cochran, Stephen Page, Cindy Ragland, and Shan Stamper to the Paducah Creative and Cultural Council. Mary Katz and April Cochran's term shall expire March 24, 2021. Stephen Page and Cindy Ragland's term shall expire March 24, 2022. And Shan Stamper's term shall expire March 24, 2023. Appointment of Deborah Edmonds to the Paducah Convention and Visitors Bureau. Said terms shall expire December 31, 2023. Reappointment of Paul King, Brad Arterburn, and Shirley Walker. An appointment of Melissa Yates to the Forest Hills Village Incorporated Board. The term of Paul King shall expire May 6, 2024. The terms of Brad Arterburn and Shirley Walker shall expire November 4, 2024. Melissa Yates will fulfill the term of James C. Tidwell, who resigned. That term shall expire May 6, 2023. Personnel actions. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to apply for and accept grant funds through the Kentucky Department for Libraries and Archives, KDLA, for a fiscal year 2020 Local Records Program Grant in the amount of $33,529 based on the bids received and for services related to digitizing records for the Paducah Police Department, and authorizing the mayor to execute the grant agreement and all documents related to same. A municipal order accepting grant funds through the U.S. Department of Justice for a 2019 U.S. Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant, award in the amount of $4,367.71 for the purchase of body armor vests for the use of the Paducah Police Department. A municipal order authorizing an application for a 2020-2021 Kentucky Household Hazardous Waste Grant through the Kentucky Division of Waste Management in an amount of $25,500 to assist in funding the city and county annual spring cleanup day and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the agreement with Tyler Technologies for the license of software and the procurement of related products and services. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to apply for and accept grant funds through the Kentucky Department for Libraries and Archives, KDLA, for a 2020 Local Records Program Grant in the amount of $16,567 based on the bids received for the purchase of services related to digitizing permanent records for the Paducah City Clerk's Office, and authorizing the mayor to execute the grant agreement and all documents related to same. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application and all documents necessary for a 2020 Kentucky Office of Homeland Security Grant in the amount of $437,172.81 to enable the Paducah Police Department to purchase radio upgrades to replace all outdated handheld and mobile radios currently in use.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. And I do want to make note and thank all the applicants that we had for the Creative Council. We actually had more than we were able to appoint to that board. And so thank you to everyone applied. And also, for those who have been appointed, you will be receiving a new member packet in the mail to get you up and running when we can actually get up and running again on boards and commissions. And thank you, Lindsay, for your work on getting that ready. I'm going to move into a resolution. And tonight, just so everyone knows that's watching, we typically have the commissioners pass back and forth the readings of motions. But tonight, Commissioner Wilson and I will be doing that since we are physically present in the chambers to reduce any confusion. So I've moved that a resolution entitled a resolution authorizing the engineering project manager to execute documents for and on behalf of the City of Paducah to apply for financial assistance through the Federal Emergency Management Agency for all matters pertaining to such federal disaster assistance be adopted.
Second.
Any comments or questions about this resolution from the board? All right. Can you call roll, please?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. And Commissioner Wilson?
I move that a municipal order entitled Municipal Order Providing for Leave Under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act be adopted.
Second. I don't normally get to second people. Any questions or comments about this municipal order? No? All right. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce and adopt an ordinance titled An Ordinance Authorizing a Local Economic Stimulus Package to Mitigate the Impact of the COVID-19 Pandemic by Amending Ordinances Number 2019-6-8578, authorizing the Finance Director to Transfer $250,000 from various project funds to a Small Business Relief Fund and authorizing the expenditure of said funds for small business relief, approving a gross receipt tax extension for calendar filers, temporarily waiving taxi cab driver's license renewal requirements, temporarily reducing solid waste collection rates for commercial accounts, and declaring an emergency to exist. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends the annual budget of the City of Paducah by the following reappropriations. Transfer $250,000 to the COVID-19 Stimulus MR0079 Project and authorizes the Finance Director to appropriate $150,000 of the funds transferred to the COVID-19 Stimulus Project for the Small Business Relief Fund Program upon approval of applications submitted. The remaining $100,000 will be appropriated in the same manner upon receipt of donated funds from the Community Foundation of West Kentucky, but only in the form of one-to-one matching funds. Further, this ordinance postpones the filing of the annual grocery receipts license tax, otherwise known as business license tax, to July 15, 2020, for calendar year filers. This ordinance establishes a 50% price reduction for solid waste collection for commercial, non-residential rollouts, and commercial dumpsters. This fee reduction shall be in effect for commercial solid waste collection services provided during the months of April 2020 and May 2020. This ordinance waives the requirements related to taxi cab driver's license renewals until July 1, 2020. Pursuant to KRS 83A.060, the City Commission suspends the requirement of a second reading of this ordinance. As grounds therefore, the City Commission does hereby declare an emergency to exist due to the need to mitigate the local economic effects of COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
City manager, do you want to take a moment to outline exactly what we're doing in more layman's terms so that our community and our media can know what we're doing here?
Yeah, I sure will, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity. As you just mentioned there, that's a pretty good summary of the actions that we're looking to, we're proposing to take. There's a lot of moving parts here. First and foremost, we'll start off with the business license tax, basically moving that date from the current date of April 15 back to July 15. Really just kind of marrying up what the state of Kentucky did, as well as our federal government, with the income tax collection periods. What that's going to create for us is basically moving, what we typically would get around that same date and time, April 15 through April 30, is about a $4 million receipt of revenue. So basically, what we'll be looking at for the city as we move into the next financial quarter is potentially moving off that $4 million to July, so that will create for us a little bit of a cash flow issue moving forward. It's something that we've talked about internally. We think it's the right thing to do, and we're up to that challenge. But just be aware of that, that it does have come with some cash flow issues for us that typically we're used to getting that $4 million in April, and now we'll be receiving that in July, which actually will come in into our next fiscal year. So our fourth quarter of our fiscal year '20 will be kind of minus $4 million we anticipated yet. The second thing on there, as you mentioned, was the decision by the team to recommend the 50% decrease in our commercial solid waste accounts. Basically, we bring in a monthly basis around $200,000. We thought it was advantageous for our local businesses to be able to decrease that by 50% for the next two months. So that will have an impact of $100,000 per month on our fund. So we do have a healthy reserve, and so we will basically be taking that money out of the reserve to be able to meet our expenditures. The good thing for that is while we're decreasing the fee for our businesses, we're actually using less solid waste now. So that's also less going into the transfer stations. That's less of an expenditure for us. But basically, instead of charging the same amount as we have in the past for services that they're using less of, it's almost a win-win for the local businesses and the city. Not quite. We're still going to be dipping into the reserves, but it's a good way for us to try to give support to our local businesses. The next thing is the moving the deadline for the taxi cab renewal license back. And that's basically also aligning well with what the governor wants us to do, is trying to identify any deadlines we have and push those back to July. And that was actually brought to us early on by Chief Lehrer, because that was a great idea to do that. Actually allows us to practice social distancing. And the largest one, I guess, of the bunch would be the Small Business Relief Fund that's actually being created here tonight if the Board of Commissioners approves this. This allows the city to really provide some local economic stimulus to our local businesses. We're targeted on those businesses that are 25 employees or less, and really trying to have an impact on a lot of our small businesses in the community, looking at doing $150,000 in the first round and $100,000 matchable in the second round. So basically, anywhere from $200,000 up, based upon the philanthropic efforts of our community. This will allow us to be able to give out, what we want to do, is $2,000 grants. This will impact 75 businesses in the first round and many more in the second round. So we're really excited about the opportunity to try to help them as quickly as possible. And we're trying to move nimbly. This application process and this grant process has been a partnership with the WKCTC, as well as the Community Foundation of Western Kentucky. All three of us partnering on putting this to go in a very short period of time. We do appreciate the Board of Commissioners's assistance with this. And we're really trying to see if we can turn this around, get the application started tomorrow at 8:00. Have a deadline of April 10 at 4:30. And then it gives us time, the next meeting of this body, to actually bring back the program for the grant, get that approved, and then hopefully give out actual financial awards either that Friday following our next meeting or a week later. So it's fast-moving, and the intent is to try to get money out into the businesses that need it the most to protect those businesses, to make sure that we can keep them open.
Thank you, Jim, very much. If you don't mind, I'm going to take a few minutes to actually have the application in front of me, so I want to let our community know a few more details. I want to echo what you said. Thank you to our team, specifically to our planning director, to our grants administrator, to Lindsay, to Michelle, and to you, Jim, for working on this. This is record speed to put a program together. And to the Community Foundation, and also Kevin O'Neil and Rayla Bridges and Allison Smith at West Kentucky Community and Technical College. We all came together knowing that not any one of us had the capacity to pull this off by ourselves, but as a team, we knew we could. So I want to outline that partnership for the commissioners a little bit more in depth. I think you've seen an email or two. But the way that we're working with our partners is the city, we are proposing to put the $150,000 of city money into this first round. We're asking our community to step up and utilize the Community Foundation as a donation location. We will be matching dollar for dollar up to $100,000. That's the proposal. And anyone in our community, a business that is up and running and does have cash flow and has extra income, anyone in our community that might be getting those stimulus checks and may not have to be utilizing those, we're asking that you participate with us. And for every dollar that you put into the Community Foundation for this fund, we will match it with our dollars here at city government. So we could eventually leverage up to $350,000 to be able to give to our small businesses. That is a big chunk of change for our community and for our small businesses, and we should be very proud of being able to do that. The Community College will be acting as kind of our administrator for this. And so when you see the link come out tomorrow morning on the city's website, you will actually be filling out an application that goes to the staff at the Community College. They'll be reviewing those. This should be very straightforward for all of you who will be applying. I want to just mention the actual eligibility criteria that you're going to be seeing, so be asking yourself if you think you're eligible. And I'm going to read those word for word as they are on this application. Number one is that you must be categorized as a nonessential business type that was required to cease operations as of the result of the executive orders issued by the governor. You must exist within the city limits in a brick-and-mortar location. You must be open and operating before January 1 of 2020. You must employ 25 or fewer people, and then not be a franchise or a franchise affiliated. So again, this first round was really trying to target those vulnerable businesses in our community that were having to be forced to close down in order to help us prevent the spread of this virus. We will be granting up to $2,000 for the first 75 applicants in round one. That deadline will be April 10 at 4:30 p.m. That's a Friday. And then we will continue, and I want to ask the commissioners to join us, in trying to raise those matching dollars so that we can continue to ask our community to step up and support this program so that in round two, we can grant additional businesses. I know that we want to make our dollars stretch as far as possible. And my last comment about this would be also to note the Community Foundation will be having an online donation opportunity starting on Thursday. So they're working on their backend to create that online donation button, and they will have that up and running by Thursday, they tell me. If you want to send a check, if you're watching tonight and you have some funds, any amount can be helpful, and you want to send a check to them, you would write that check to the Community Foundation of West Kentucky, PO Box 7, Paducah, Kentucky 42002. And we'll make sure that information's available for those who want to donate. I've already been reaching out to some of our local banks and other businesses that I know are doing okay right now that might have extra funds they want to support with this program. And with that being said, does anyone have any questions or comments you'd like to make about this ordinance or this program?
I do, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor Commissioners, I think this is a great opportunity for the City of Paducah to step up and try to alleviate some of the suffering and financial loss and hardships that so many of our people and across the nation are having to go through and suffer. A lot of people have lost their jobs, a lot of businesses have been forced to shut down, and it's going to get worse before it gets better. One economist nationally projected that we could have as high an unemployment rate as 32%. It was only 25, well, only, it was 25% during the Great Depression, so it shows you the magnitude that's possibly looming out there. So I hope it don't. But at any rate, I'm proud of the City of Paducah and proud to be able to vote to help provide some relief for our citizens and to help keep them afloat through this trying time. It's a good bill.
Uh, Mayor?
Commissioner Abraham?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner Abraham, then we'll come back to Commissioner McElroy.
Okay. Just wanted to echo some of the things that Commissioner Watkins said. A lot of times with these type of packages, the first hurdle that I'm trying to jump as a person needing those funds are a lot of red tape that looks like that's been done away with so that we can get the funds to the folks who need it as quickly as possible. The second thing I'd like to say is that, you know, this community never ceases to amaze me is the way they come together in times of tragedy. And again, you look around and it's not one person doing one thing. It's everybody doing a little bit, and it spreads it out. And I think it's one of the things that makes us who we are. So I'd like to congratulate the staff and our supporting partners to pull this together for our folks.
I'm super excited about it, too, and thank you all for your hard work. I know this was not easy, and it was done quickly. I'd just like to put a challenge out there. If your job is still intact, if you're still getting your normal paycheck, you can give something to this because you're not downtown eating at restaurants or getting entertainment down there, or the boutiques, or hair salons, and these people are really hurting. So if your income's intact, and I'd like to start with our own city employees and challenge everybody to give something. We can all do something and get these matching funds going and bring the rest of the community in and really help people during this difficult, difficult time. So thank you. And let's, as Richard said, we are a very generous community, so let's show forth that same generosity here.
Thank you. Well, what they've all said, I will say as well, and I am talking to small businesses all the time, trying to help them through all of the red tape for the federal programs and the state programs that they're eligible for now. But this is a way for us to show support to those businesses. Another way is there are those businesses that are staying open with curbside delivery and pickup and all kinds of ways that we can support them. So more, now more than ever, it's important that we support our local businesses, and we're out there doing that. I know they're all taking a lot of precautions. You know, I eat out a lot, and I have continued, and they're all taking precautions for us. So this is just a great way for us to be involved in helping our businesses and showing our support for our community. So yes, we should all challenge ourselves and challenge our local businesses that can provide support to step up and help us make that second match. This is a good opportunity for that.
Absolutely. Well, I think all of us have probably had conversations with many generous people in our community, kind of asking, what can I do? And I was on the call with United Way today and PCM and Family Services, and a lot of donations are going their way, which we want to make sure we continue to encourage to happen because they're going to really catch the most vulnerable people in our community and the basic needs that they have. But we also all know that our small businesses are suffering as well, and we want to make sure that we continue to support them. So thank you all for your support. Thank you to our partners, and thank you to the staff. And I will ask our community and the small businesses that will be applying to practice that patience with us. I know we're all feeling desperate in this time, but we're literally creating things out of nothing overnight. And so I'm just going to ask all of us to practice that patience as we move forward and try to figure out the best way to serve the community. So with that, I'm going to ask the city clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. And Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 2019-6-8578, entitled An Ordinance Adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for the Fiscal Year July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020, as adopted by ordinance number 2019-68578, be amended by the following reappropriations. Transfer $141,000 from the fiscal year 2020 Fleet Trust Fund balance to the Fleet Trust Fund.
Second. I think we heard about this at our last meeting. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this item before I call roll? Okay. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 2019-6-878, entitled An Ordinance Adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for the Fiscal Year July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the budget, the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020, as adopted by ordinance number 2019-6-8578, be amended by the following reappropriations. Transfer $80,000 from the fiscal year 2020 Unreserved MAP Fund balance to the Flood Mitigation Bridge Design Project Account PF0077.
Second. That's for the Butner Lane Bridge Project.
That's for the Butner Lane Project. So this will be, did I say design? That's design. Is Jim on here still? We talked about that last time. Are you still on here, Jim?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear for the public that might be watching this meeting, that that was the design... that was the design funding for the Buckner Lane Project, which is one of our stormwater projects, correct?
That is correct. It's actually linked to what's coming up down in sea that we were about ready to read. That is basically moving money in our budget so we have enough money to pay for that contract. And that is one of the projects identified by our, for our consultants as one of our priority projects.
Excellent. And then also, that's being matched by FEMA as well, so we're getting outside funding for that.
That's exactly right. FEMA is contributing to that project as well for the designing construction.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments about this item?
I would like to make a comment if I could, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I think this is a great move here, and I'm thrilled that we're getting all this money from FEMA to be able to do this. Everyone around town is concerned about the flooding when we have heavy rains. And one of the worst, if not the worst spot in town for that flooding is that intersection with Buckner Lane and Pecan Drive and where those apartments are. And this won't alleviate all the flooding, as the city engineer has said, but it will be a big help in that area where there is a lot of flooding when we have really heavy downpour and a concentrated amount of time. So I'm thankful that we're able to get some money and put some with it to help alleviate the flooding and that most, well, that area, which is really prone to as much flooding as anywhere around town, I suppose. And so this is a movement forward in this area to try to mitigate some of the flooding around town that we have to deal with.
Absolutely. Anyone else want to make comments?
That's a great project.
All right. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Professional Services Agreement with BFW Engineering and Testing, Inc., in an Amount of $154,036 for Survey, Roadway, and Structure Design for the Buckner Lane Bridge Replacement over Crooked Creek." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute a professional services agreement in amount of $154,036 with BFW Engineering and Testing, Inc., for professional services related to the Buckner Lane Bridge Replacement Project. This expenditure shall be charged to the flood mitigation-bridge design project number PF0077.
Second. Any comments or questions? This is related to the item we just approved. This is the design contract. A call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Professional Services Agreement with CBIZ Benefits and Insurance Services, Inc., in an Amount of $39,000 plus direct expenses in an amount not to exceed $1,600 for a classification and compensation study for the City of Paducah." This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a professional services agreement in the amount of $39,000 plus direct expenses in an amount not to exceed $1,600 with CBIZ Benefits and Insurance Services, Inc., for a classification and compensation study for the City of Paducah. This expenditure shall be charged to the Pay and Class Study 2020 project account number MR0077.
Second. Anyone have any comments or questions about this item? We heard about this at the last meeting as well. No? All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for the Closing of a Portion of an Alley Between 160 and 200 Bruce Avenue," and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents relating to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah does hereby authorize the closure of a portion of an alley between 160 and 200 Bruce Avenue, and authorizes, empowers, and directs the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed from the city to the property owners in or abutting the public ways to be closed.
Second. No, since we don't have the city engineer, Jim, are you prepared to speak about this?
Yeah, I sure am. Basically, what this is, this is a request of the adjoining or adjacent property owners. This is going to be your vinyl lint tech facility. They purchased the property right next to the current facility. And this is a little triangle that you probably don't even know is there that exists. It's actually right away they need to close so they can continue with their expansion.
Excellent. I hope in this.
This is also, just to add to that, this is supported by the engineering department, the planning department, and the planning commission.
Great. Any questions from the commission?
Yeah, just, yeah, if I may?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, and I think the city manager touched on it, this disclosure of this alley would impact, I guess, just one particular person. And the reason I ask that, because sometimes when we close, we close alleys, we want to make sure that any adjacent neighbors are aware that that's going to happen. But it sounds like that this is such a small piece of alleyway that that's not the case. Is that, am I understanding that right, city manager?
You're, you're correct, Commissioner. This is basically a little triangle property that is in between two of, two different pieces of property that's owned by the same person, and it goes no place else. It's just, it's a small piece of triangle.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? All right. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting the Bid of Jim Smith Contracting LLC in the Amount of $479,350.50 for the Greenway Trail Phase 5 Project," and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute a professional services agreement in an amount of $479,350.50 with Jim Smith Contracting LLC for the Greenway Trail Phase 5 Project, and authorizes the transfer of $50,000 from the Boils Estate Trust into the Greenway Trail Phase 5 Project account. Second. Jim, I did have one, or one question about that. I know that we have the Boils Estate Trust that helps us fund our Greenway Trail. Do we already have funds in that estate account, and we're just adding 50,000 to it? Or are we just only matching with 50,000?
That is, I'm trying to run back on that one there. We have, of course, that's, we have a lot of different revenue plots that are going into that, including a lot of grant dollars, and as far as we're moving additional money in from the trust.
Okay. When we, for the next meeting, do you mind having like a breakdown of how we're, of where we're getting the funds to pay for the whole, the whole amount?
Yes, I sure can. In fact, I have that in my office, but it doesn't do many here, does it?
No problem. Any, anyone else have any questions?
No, I think that would be helpful, though, but it's a wonderful project, and you certainly see it being used a lot right now.
That's very true.
People are pretty respectful on it. Very, it's one thing you can do.
Six foot apart.
Not on Sunday afternoon on a Monday, but.
Yeah.
What I'll do, Madam Mayor, is I'll make sure that that's actually added to the agenda so that you guys will all see that.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to move on to Commissioner Wilson.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Professional Services Contract with BFW Engineering and Testing, Inc., in the Amount of $250,000 for Environmental Services for the Paducah Riverfront Infrastructure Improvement Project, the Build Grant." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute a professional services agreement in amount of $250,000 with BFW Engineering and Testing, Inc., for the environmental assessment services for the Paducah Riverfront Infrastructure Improvement Project for the Build Grant.
Second. This is exciting. This means we're making movement on the project that we were funded by the federal government last fall. And so the good news is, even though we're in the middle of a pandemic, those funds still remain, and we will continue to move this project forward, I think in a fairly lengthy timeline, unfortunately, but it will come eventually.
Amen. That sounds great.
All right, city manager, you have some comments you want to make tonight?
Just to update the Board of Commissioners, that your team has been working very hard over the last three weeks towards the COVID-19 response. We've implemented a lot of social distancing. We've also implemented a lot of working from home, if you will, from the, for our offices, but still we have provided a good service to the community. We continue to look for ways that we can improve on what we do. This here has been a fun ride. I've been, I've been nervous about this all day long. I didn't know how this would work, but so far it's doing really well, and I thank you guys for your efforts with this as well. And thank you for your leadership as we go through these times. I do appreciate what you're doing, Madam Mayor, with the daily updates you give, Monday through Friday, on Facebook, through the City's Facebook account. That's really helpful for our residents. I encourage the residents to watch that because you really bring a lot of good information from what the city's doing, what the state's doing, and I do appreciate that. I also want to give a shout out to Pam Spencer, Public Information Officer. She really does a good job kind of culling through what the nation's doing, the state's doing, the city's doing, and preparing those daily documents for us. And I'm hoping that you guys can value that too, and I share that with you. I know it kind of sets the stage for what we look at every day and helps us to make even good decisions.
Well, thank you so much, city manager, and to the team for being so flexible. I've been really impressed with the amount of agility that everyone has demonstrated. And honestly, to, to keep our core services and even some non-core services still going is pretty impressive during this time. So I hope you'll share that with all of our team members, that we're thankful for them showing up every day and getting creative with how to continue the city services. Are there comments from the Board of Commissioners tonight?
Before we get to that, Madam Mayor, I did forget that Commissioner Abraham asked for some stuff from John, and I talked to John, this morning, our finance director, to make sure I had all his questions answered. And I wanted to share that with the board. Commissioner Abraham has a lot of good questions concerning our finances and what the impact of COVID-19 is doing to that. First and foremost, we talked about what the deferring of the, of the license fees that we did tonight is going to do for us. Really, it kind of just sets the stage, as I mentioned before, as potential cash flow issue. We're going to monitor that and work with that. Next, the, the impact that this is going to have on our payroll tax. And that's something that John and myself have talked about internally for days now. In fact, we have a, if you would, an emergency management meeting tomorrow, emergency budget management meeting tomorrow, myself, Michelle Smolin, John Perkins, and Audrey Hearn, and to talk about the, what the impact's going to be on our fourth quarter, and also how this is going to impact us in moving forward with FY '21, and what those challenges look like. It's kind of hard to project right now. We're also tracking what's happening nationally in the economy, what's happening in the stock exchange, looking at the local impact it's having upon our businesses. But I am appreciative, though, of the effort that our nation's doing to helping our small businesses. I'm also appreciative of what the governor's doing, and I'm also appreciative of what this body did tonight to help those small businesses. Because really, we're investing our own, and that's going to mitigate the impact we're going to have on our payroll taxes. Because all of you know, the payroll tax is what drives our, our revenues. So basically, if we're looking at a decrease in the revenues generated by our restaurants, our retail establishments, based upon a decrease in payroll, that's going to have an impact upon our budget. We're trying to put our hands around that and hopefully be able to bring more information to you guys in the future, us in the future, to kind of inform where we think we're going to be at. But also, we're thinking about that as we move on to FY '21's budget, looking upon the impact it's going to have for us next year and the upcoming budget, which starts showing up first. But as far as what we know now, what our, what our concerns are is mainly payroll tax. The insurance premium tax may take a dip. We won't know that for a while. But we noticed that in the last recession, John talked about in the last recession, that that tax also took a small decrease. People were, of course, being very business savvy. You know, they would increase deductibles to decrease their premiums, or some people just stopped their interest coverage. So that, that in case has impacted upon the taxes that are raised on those premiums. So we'll wait to see how this plays out too going into next year. We don't anticipate very, very much impact on property tax. And the last question that Commissioner Abraham talked about was what, how this last, the most recent change in the interest rates affected our $20 million bond issue. And we did have a, basically, we bid that out, as you guys are aware, we had roughly about a 1.7% interest rate on that bond issue. It did drop down this month 0.55%, or 55 basis points. So basically, we're looking at making now interest on that bond issue until we spend those funds out, about 9,000 a month. So that 9,000 a month will stay there until we do start to spend that bond issue out. At 1.7%, roughly about 19,000 less, or I should say more than what we were getting now. So significant impact based upon what the economic environment is.
Thank you, Commissioner, Jim.
Thank you, city manager. Comments from the Board of Commissioners tonight?
I would just, a fun thing, one thing we can still do is get our yards ready for the Dogwood Trail, which starts April the 8th, and that might be something that we can all enjoy in a bigger degree. We might see more people driving through our community because it's, again, something they can safely do. So I just encourage people to take care of their yards and light up, and let's enjoy and celebrate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think I actually saw a message come through today that they're going to suggest using green lights. Did I see that come through? In order to kind of go with the governor's theme of compassion and making sure that we're sharing that. I know that the organizers, the beautification board's getting creative with how to make it interesting from your car. We will not be doing walks or bike rides or any of that kind of things, but we want to make sure people can enjoy the dogwoods in their vehicle. So thanks for bringing that up. Commissioner Watkins, Commissioner Abraham? Anything tonight?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Oh, just that, obviously, with, like everybody else, these are, these are really stressful times. Try not to stress to the point where you're paralyzed. It's, it is a rough time, but with some of the things that we've done tonight, with some of the outreach of our, our neighbors in the past couple of weeks, we're here for each other, doing the best we can. This is kind of like an equalizer. Everybody's in the same boat. And those of us who maybe have a larger boat with an extra paddle or whatever, then we can reach back and help those not as fortunate. So I believe in the community, and more importantly, I believe in the folks in it. So hang in there, this too will pass.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Commissioner Watkins?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I would just like to say that it is a trying time, but we're tough people, we're strong people, we're believers, and, and we know that we'll get through this. We just need to follow the CDC guidelines and down from the White House, the governor's office, and the mayor's office, City Hall. And if we will follow these guidelines religiously and take this time to, you know, just reassess ourselves and our families and our lives and, and use it in a positive way and know that there will be an end to this. We will get through it, and we'll, the economy's strong. We will rebound. This is not like going through the Great Depression. It's a, a physical thing that, an element thing, a virus that has caused this, not a major failure of our economy. So we will rebound kind of quickly, I think, once we can, we can get this, get past this virus. So stay hopeful, have faith, things are going to get better, and God bless all.
Thank you, absolutely.
I have one more thing.
Yeah.
Let's just be sure and encourage our healthcare workers. I think it's going to get tough. It's starting to get tougher. Some of them are frightened, some of them are already tired. But if, as you have opportunity, those you know, send them a text. Just an encouraging word is they are really going to be on the front lines.
Absolutely. Commissioner Wilson?
Well, I just want to follow up on some of that. It's easy to feel isolated and to feel a little bit like, are you doing enough? So I just want to ask everybody to reach out, as you said, to each other. Support our small business owners, support our healthcare workers, just support each other and your friends. And some of the tips that we shared on Friday on a call was to not worry about what you just can't control, and try to stay focused on what you can control, and the rest of it will work out as you get to it, and just really support each other. I'm going to shift, one more thing, though. I know, I know that we put out a lot of information about the trash bags, and I've seen a lot over the weekend. It was a beautiful weekend, and people were working in their yards, and they were leaving those all around. I know that we want them to be put in the trash receptacles. Jim, would you mind just addressing that?
Yeah, the, right now, we're picking up the solid waste. We're asking our residents to put the solid waste in the rollout containers. I did also share with the mayor today that we realize that people are staying home more, and they are creating more solid waste for residential purposes, and that's okay, but fill up your rollout, put it out there on your normal trash day. We will pick it up as usual. Back there a little bit earlier now, too. The guys are working hard at that. And then, once it's done, take whatever you have left in your house, put it back in the rollout, and call us back, and we'll come and get it again a second time each week for your choice.
Great, thank you, because, I mean, we do want to have the Dogwood Trail to look beautiful for our city, and this is a time to take a lot of pride in it. So thank you for reminding everyone of that. But now's the time, support each other, support our local businesses, do what you can.
Absolutely. Yep. Well, thanks for that question, and let's make sure that we are very clear to our community that if you still have trash after your typical pickup day, you can call City Hall, and we will do another pickup for you, but that's upon request. So make sure that you're making that phone call if you have that. Okay, thanks for that. I just wanted to take a few moments just to kind of remind everyone about some of the resources that are available to our community, some of the things that we've already done. We had, this is our first meeting since all of this has really started. I want to remind everyone that we have someone here in our customer experience department daily. They're rotating for social distancing purposes, but we do have someone here answering the phone. That phone number is 270-444-8800, and that is if you know of anyone, or you are someone that needs access to resources. They are utilizing the McCracken County's reference guide and directory, so they're able to share with you the kinds of resources that are available. Some of the agencies in our community have had to reduce their services, just because they're trying to take care of their own employees and their own budgets as well. But I do know that our food banks are up and running, they are still taking donations for food items, they're still looking for funding donations, so all of that is still happening, and our community is still responding to those basic needs in our community. I do also, to really piggyback on what Commissioner McElroy said, thank our local healthcare providers. Our hospitals have stepped up, and they are ready. And some people, I'm sure Commissioner McElroy can attest, are saying it's kind of empty right now, because everyone's just preparing for the, the big wave of possible cases here in McCracken County. You know, the ideal situation is that we come out of this on the other end, having not overburdened our healthcare system. That is the ultimate outcome. The good news is, we're still in the window to be able to do that, that is realistic for our community, but it's only realistic if we practice the guidelines. I'm hearing stories about block parties being organized. I am seeing teenagers hanging out very close to one another on the riverfront. That stuff is unacceptable. These are the kinds of behaviors that we have got to get a handle on in our community. I've had friends ask me to talk to their teenagers so that they'll believe this is real. I'm happy to do that if you need me to. I know our health department is working overtime right now to make sure that our local businesses are practicing. I'm in touch with one of our health department staffers almost daily. He's going around to businesses. There's been some complaints about lows. He has worked with the managers there to make sure that they have taped down on the aisles, to know where the six feet is, to make sure that there's practices happening there. So if you are an employer and you're still open, and you have questions, but, and you just want that extra feedback, the health department is offering that resource. I want to make sure our community, our businesses that are open knows about that resource, because if you're questioning whether or not you're doing it right, call the health department, get them to come help you, and do a review of that. I also want to say thank you to the Chamber of Commerce. I know you guys have spent a lot of time and effort making sure our local businesses understand all the programs that are available. It is a nightmare, as a small business owner, to navigate all of that, that's changing constantly. It's a nightmare even when we don't have a crisis, and when we are having a crisis. So thank you, and also to Chris Wildridge, I know, at the Murray State campus is helping with that. It's helping, so don't let up. Keep going. Thank you very much for that.
Well, speaking of that, we do have a call tomorrow at 2:00 with you and Jim for small businesses that want to get more information about the small grant program.
Oh, yeah. How can someone find out how to get on that call?
It's on our website, paducahchamber.org.
Excellent. Thank you. And just finally, to you Commissioners, thank you so much for your support. I know it's very difficult for us to be in as much contact as we typically are. Thank you for trusting the team. Thank you for your support in our community, and please, you know, keep the open communication going as much as we possibly can. I, I know, we all know we're going to get through it, but as Commissioner Abraham said, you know, fear sometimes paralyzes us. That was very well said, and I think about that every morning when I get up, but we've got to push through that with our resiliency, and we're a strong community, there's no doubt about it, and we will get through it. So with that being said, I'm going to make a motion for us to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all so much.